All right, good morning. Welcome to the July 10, 2018 Board of Supervisors Calaveras County Meeting. Surely all rise for the flag, pledge to the flag. Mr. Segal, will you please lead us?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Hi, Madam Clerk.
Announcements. This is a time for board members and county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Any board announcements?
Mr. Chair, I do have an announcement. Mr. Larry Yanni, who sits on chairs and boards and works for the Motherlode Job Training, which we're part of through JPA, was involved in a very serious motorcycle accident over July 4th weekend. He is in the hospital, but he's going to be there for a long, long time, it looks like. So I want to make sure that we get our thoughts and prayers to him for his recovery. Thank you.
Any other board announcements? Staff announcements? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item.
Public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Sir, you're up.
Good morning. My main purpose in coming here is to find the progress on the repair of Gwynmine Road that I bore you so often with last year. I was lied to repeatedly by a number of county officials on the progress towards fixing it. It is disgraceful that here we are, a year and a half later, and no work has begun. The road is continuing to deteriorate. The county should have had it shut down or fixed it, preferably fixing it since that's your obligation. But I understand there's a report coming out, item number one, when you get to this serious agenda. I will defer further comments till I've heard what's current. I hope never to be lied to again by any of you people. And finally, I would like to address Mr. McManus.
Sir, you-
Who has brought a whole lot of controversy to this county, partly ego-driven, but he got up here when I had my application before this board and deliberately lied about my circumstances, which would entitle me to call him a liar if I were so disposed.
Sir, 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 that's not within our-
It would-
It's not within our purview, sir.
It is. It happened in this board. This man said it, but I would like to make a point, and I will not call anybody any names.
Make your point and talk directly to the board.
My point is, a number of people got up speaking for him-
To talk to the board.
A number of people got up speaking on behalf of Mr. McManus, promising that if you guys ban pot, they're going to throw in all of this money and they're going to help make up the shortfall. And so far, I have not heard of one of them people telling the truth and putting any money into the budget. So I implore us to start a fund, which I would like to call a McManus Recovery Fund, and accumulate those promised dollars. Thank you.
What is your point of order, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I would hope that you would refer to the Board Rules of Procedure, which have been passed, adopted, and amended, and refer to Rule 46. If you would like me to read it, I can, or if you would like county council to read it. The conversation that just took place is entirely out of order and should have been stopped. To allow it to continue means that I don't have an opportunity to unring the bell. That conversation should have been stopped and Rule 46 enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, you need to hold your tongue, sir. He has a right to speak, just like you did, sir. Sir? You need to hold your tongue. Thank you. You had your chance, you spoke. Next.
Marty Crane, I can see we have some fine tuning to do on our procedures. Over the last, I don't know how many months, I've been a bit concerned about when we pass resolutions, especially when they have to do with domestic violence or elder abuse, and the fact that it always seems to be Supervisor Clapp that is the one presenting these resolutions. And to me, that feels insulting to me because of what I already know. So I was prepared to come today to address that and something along those lines, because the last time, it was, I was worried about it, and I thought, surely they wouldn't do that again. Well, it happened. So I was going to address this, and then Bonnie Newman told me that she wrote a letter to the editor, and so I'm just going to read that letter. On June 12th, at the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting, a resolution was introduced to proclaim June as Elder Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Allowing Supervisor Clyde Clapp to introduce his proclamation cheapened and made a mockery of this occasion. Chairperson Tofanelli did not designate Clapp to make this presentation. Supervisor Clapp removed these documents from Supervisor Guaramendi's place and took it upon himself to announce this resolution. Most people in the chamber were appalled by the hypocrisy of this action. A number of speakers were disgusted and outraged by this. Perhaps an equal number of ill-informed or, say, lesser informed speakers expressed support for Supervisor Clapp. I would suggest these individuals educate themselves by reading the relevant documents related to an upcoming civil case, Zamora versus Clapp, available at Calaveras County Court Records. In September, this case is scheduled to be heard in Calaveras County Superior Court to determine the validity of the allegations made against Clapp. Thirty years ago, Clapp also made a mockery of the Women's Crisis Line's attempt to provide protection for battered women by using domestic violence restraining orders to foul up a custody battle involving a minor child. This was disgraceful. Financial abuse of seniors is a crime. Although no criminal charges have been filed against Clapp yet, it is my understanding that you are not presumed innocent. You are not innocent until found guilty. You are presumed innocent until found guilty. So I think we should just consider this and not let that happen. It is dishonest to steal something from someone else's desk and take it upon yourself to read it. Thank you.
Good morning, Bonnie Newman from Double Springs. I could go two ways today. Because tomorrow is Population Awareness Day, I'd like to make a statement. In 1989, the world population stood at 5 million, I'm sorry, 5 billion. Less than 30 years later, the world population has increased 50 percent. It's 7.5 billion today. I think the overpopulation is the source of a lot of the problems that we have. If we had enough room, we wouldn't care what our neighbors were doing. We wouldn't be bothered by our neighbors. But now we're living on top of each other, next to each other, under each other, and I just think it's a shame. We need to put some energy into controlling the population growth. And this wasn't on my agenda, but I'm going to talk about it. There's a lot of controversy about people kneeling for the National Anthem. I never liked the National Anthem. It was not my favorite patriotic song. I don't like bombs bursting, and I don't like rockets and allusion to warfare. My favorite patriotic song was always "America the Beautiful," and I'd like to sing it because I know you're music lovers. And anyone that knows the words, I encourage you to sing along with me. Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of grain, for purple mountains majesties above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed His grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. Thank you all. God bless you patriots, Americans, and fellow citizens.
Hi, my name is Jessica, I'm from District Run. I did not really want to come up here today, but this is about my supervisor, Gary Tofanelli. And you had called my husband recently and spoke with him. He was a little bit more so unsettled to want to come up and talk about it, so I've chosen to come up and speak about what I heard from the conversation. Just so you know, I do mention 806, but this is not about 806. You mentioned how you were an ironworker, and he mentioned how he was, you know, he ran a shovel his entire life, which is true. You also were telling him that as a district citizen, he had called and expressed his concern about things that were going on. You began to express that 806 was strictly for the cannabis growers, to get them into compliance with the ban and then to get them out, and that the rest of us hard-working guys wouldn't have to deal with it anymore. This is selective enforcement. You also said that many current situations, like the shipping container rules that were put in place to prevent growers from abusing them by living in them or running power to them, that this was an abuse, an overreaction of the departments, and that it was enforced on everybody, and that changes will be made, and to just hold on. This is selective enforcement. You also said not to believe the news and what you hear about the so-called "good farmers", and that we're not all good, that we use guns and whatnot to guard our harvests, that we create threats to our neighbors, oh, and that we're using more square footage than we pay for. Not only is, I find this interpretation of legally paid compliant cultivators personally offensive, since you know me, but also, as many others did, I paid extra square footage in order to grow with. I paid over $16,000, $16,000 over what I was utilizing to have space to grow with because I expected to be able to grow. I planned for growth and was willing to pay for it, as many of the other good farmers did, make growth decisions for their businesses that benefited the county. Now I know who your constituencies are and who you truly represent, and it does not feel like it's the local taxpaying citizens. Can you really say to me that you know the cannabis businesses, they're in D1, more than me? Do you feel like you've reached out and gotten to know them and know that these issues are about the good farmers? Because I do. I know them, and I've spoken to them, and the majority of the, in D1, are helpful and positive for the community. We deserve to be represented. The lack of disrespect, the lack of respect, the disregard for accretancy, the refusal to separate us from legally paid compliant farmers is ridiculous.
Good morning. Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. There's a lot of hard acts to follow here. I don't have anything, well, I probably do have some things to complain about, but maybe I can do that later. I have a positive thing to talk about, though. Our Taxpayer Association is holding our 10th Annual Barbecue. Can you believe we've been around for 10 years? It's incredible. And it's going to be held at the Pickle Patch on August 9th between 5:00 and 8:00 p.m. Our keynote speaker is Congressman McClintock, and our other speaker is Eric Eisenheimer. Eisenhammer has been on our Taxpayer Alert TV program, and he's quite an accomplished activist, supporting property rights and supporting the taxpayer and the public. It's really a fantastic guy, very highly organized, and his talk should be very interesting. We also have awards for excellent public service. We have Mike Johnson, Fire Chief, who was nominated by Mike Olivera. And we're going to have songs, patriotic songs, sung by Russ Thomas, former supervisor and CCWD director. And I'm not sure if we can get him to sing "Danny Boy." He wouldn't do it last time, but if we can, there won't be a dry eye around because he's just great. And online reservations are available at our website, calaverastaxpayers.org. And we need to close our online booking at August 4th so we can know how many people is going to be served. And incidentally, the Pickle Patch is very unique. Not only they have good food, excellent service, but they have a sense of humor. If you go in there, you'll see a little sign that says, "We hope your day is nice as your butt." I mean, where would you see a sign like that? And then during the last election, the ladies there, the waitresses, wore special t-shirts, and the t-shirt said, "Adorable Deplorables." Can you believe that? I imagine those t-shirts would be worth a lot of money right now as a collector's item. Have a great day.
Good morning. Katinka Nygaard-McEwen, District 2, mother of two, resident of this great county of Calaveras for 11 years, and Butte Fire survivor. For nearly three years, I've held our family together. As I've previously notified this board, there are still many unfortunate families that find themselves living in substandard housing. Many, like ourselves, have yet to reach even moderate settlements for PG&E's deliberate negligence. Our community lost 475 homes, yet fewer than 100 have been rebuilt. Should it not be this board's responsibility to encourage and help facilitate reconstruction for as many owners as possible? Dennis, we all know that you favor unfettered growth opportunities for your developer friends at Castle &amp; Cook. Your bigotry likely precludes you from extending the same concession to those of us that survived the fire in District 2. Clyde, we all know you agree with Dennis because this is commonly the only contribution you have to make during board deliberations. It is clear that I needn't appeal for consideration from you two heartless men, as the punitive retribution you seek to enact later today says it all. Therefore, Jack, Mike, and Gary, take under consideration the whole community's need for healing and reconstruction. Don't be fooled by Dennis's feigned desire to suddenly reunite the community after all has been done, after all he has done, to fan the flames of divisiveness. What the people need is a county government that promotes sustainable reconstruction for fire victims. To this day, there remains a great need for affordable housing alternatives to solve the crisis created by the fire. Maybe Castle &amp; Cook should be tasked with this responsibility. On second thought, Castle &amp; Cook have already failed to provide the citizens of Copperopolis with the amenities they promised, so they probably wouldn't be capable anyway. Would you three gentlemen put in the work to create positive environment that is necessary to facilitate a reasonable solution? If current tactics are any indicator, failure to pay for building plans and all the increased fees required to build a house means that we will be forcibly removed from our camper on our land come September. We don't know what we'll be able to afford yet, as we have no settlement with PG&E, and you've banned our family business. There are no jobs here anymore. We have laid off our workers, and we've gone from employers to unemployed. Sadly, if Dennis gets his Gestapo ordinance, then we certainly won't be able to afford the luxury of living in the 429 square feet that the six of us are forced to call home. On behalf of all the Butte Fire victims who are currently threatened by predetermined expiration of our local state of emergency and have yet to return to the normalcy of daily living in affordable housing, please help us to rebuild when we are finally able. Don't abandon us, when now is the time that we need you most. Please. Thank you.
Ken, hold on one second.
Yep.
Can we make sure, I've been hearing a lot of phones go off. Can everybody just take a moment, make sure their phone is off or on vibrate or sound off on it? Thank you.
Hey, my name is Brian Baker. I'm a Valley Springs resident, former sheriff's deputy up here. I'm here to talk to you guys to see what the board can do to help the sheriff's office. In the last two months, the sheriff's office has lost five deputies. Three of those deputies had 12-plus years of experience, one had 11-plus years of experience, and the other had, I believe, about four. I am both happy and sad to say that I was able to recruit three of those deputies to my current agency. The sad part about that is they're going from working a five, or four days on, four day off schedule, they're going to come to my agency to work five days on, 50 hours a week scheduled. So they're going to go to working one extra day, six extra hours a week, scheduled, when in reality, they're going to work probably one day less a week and 16 to 18 hours less a week. There's something that needs to be done with the sheriff's office up here. It's more than just a staffing issue, and it's more than a monetary issue. These five deputies have left since they've gotten quite a large raise. So it's more than, it's more than a money issue. There's some other issue that needs to be looked at at the sheriff's office, whether it's a morale issue, whether it's an administration issue, whether it's that they're getting work six days a week, 12 hours a day, getting one day off to be with their family and to try to recover. Not only is that an issue, but the other issue with that is, I don't know if you folks have worked six days a week, 12 hours a day. Once in a while is not terrible. Doing it for weeks and weeks and weeks and months on end is a serious issue that's not only a safety issue to those deputies, but it's also a liability issue to the county. Because when one of those deputies has worked that sixth 12-hour day, they're at the end of their 12-hour shift, and they stack a car up, they have some type of use-of-force incident where their judgment's now clouded because they have worked, this is their fifth, sixth day a week in a row that they've had, this is an issue that's getting to catastrophic proportions at the sheriff's office. I understand that they have something like 14 deputies in the academies, slated to go to the academy, some huge number. The problem with that is, of the five deputies that just left, two of them were corporals. They're the FTOs. They're the people that train the new deputies to do their job correctly and safely. Of the people that replace those two's FTOs, my understanding is, one of them had three years of experience, and one of them had two, and had to wait just a little while to hit that two-year experience mark. So this is an issue that's getting, like I said, to catastrophic proportions. I'm hoping there's something the board can do, whether it's reach out to consultants to figure out what the issues are or something, but something needs to happen to help the sheriff's office and help the community with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I got good news. Yesterday, I went out to District 2, because I live out there, and I hadn't been out to Mountain Ranch in a long time. So I decided to go out to Sanders and see what it was like. Things are improving. I talked to another customer who was standing there. I said, "Does it feel different to you, or is it just me?" And she said, "No, it feels like things are looking better." I was just mentioning that to my husband yesterday, that the ban is in place, the growers that want to maintain their legal status with the state of California are looking for other places to grow where it's legal. And to me, it's like, we're getting a breath of fresh air. We're going back to where we used to be, even though we have had our problems with the fire and there's less people because they moved out. I mean, they couldn't hang. And maybe they'll come back, but there's safety and new businesses that are coming in. And also, when I was at Treats, I had to buy ice cream, and I'm short, and the shelf one of my ice cream on was the top and in the back, and the particular one I wanted. And there was a customer there, someone, and another guy who was shopping, and I asked him if he would help me get the one I wanted. And he did, and I was just, I was like, "We're back! Calaveras is back!" I was so excited. So anyway, I went to the checker, and as I was standing in line, there was a woman behind me who said, "Are you from the Bay Area, from the East Bay?" And I said, "No, I've been here a long time." And so I told my story about the ice cream to the checker, and she overheard, and I said, "You know, it's really cool to live in a small town where people care." And she, the lady who had asked me if I was from the Bay Area, said, "That's why I came here." So they're coming back. They're coming, and it's going to be okay. Thank you, guys, for voting the way you did.
Mr. Chairman, during my procedural point of order, I referred to Rule 46, and it could be that not everyone is familiar with Rule 46.
Point of order. There is no point of order right now, sir. Thank you. You'll have to wait until he finishes.
Yes.
Thank you. Proceed.
Okay. I offered to read Rule 46 so that people would understand what it is, and if they hadn't read it before and weren't familiar with it, or asked if you would like county council to read it, so that everyone would know what we're talking about. For my public comments, I'll use my three minutes. As a public service, I will read Rule 46, and then everyone here will be familiar with it, or at least have some exposure to it. In the Board Rules of Procedure adopted January 8th, 2014, and amended in 2015, Rule 46 pertains to orderly conduct, and it states, "Each person who addresses the board shall not make personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of the board, staff, or general public. Any person who makes such remarks, or who utters loud or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any board meeting, shall at the discretion of the board, or a majority of the board, be barred from further audience before the board during that board meeting." And that's Government Code Section 54957.9. I think this is probably one of the rules that is least frequently adhered to. Every time there's a controversial subject on the agenda, the meeting seems to descend and spiral down into an unpleasant experience for everyone, where we have to take a break, we have to regroup, we have to ask people to please behave in an orderly manner. This is government in the United States. We are not in Venezuela, where we settle things with fistfights at our government meetings. And I would ask the chair to take Rule 46 to heart. And as soon as you sense that someone is violating Rule 46, please intervene and try to keep the meeting on an even keel. These issues are difficult enough with all the emotion that's involved. If we don't have order, then we're going to have chaos here. And I would ask the chairman to please try to avoid chaos in the boardroom during the meetings. Thank you.
I'm not hearing your point of order. He had not out of order. There was nothing done that was out of order. Thank you. Next.
Your rule is clearly unconstitutional.
Sit down, sir. Sit down.
Good morning. At the last meeting, I mentioned the price for the limitations of this board's collective imagination and willingness and ability to cooperate are borne by people like me. It's also borne by the people behind me and the ones who don't know your names, paying zero attention to what's going on here today. know your names, paying zero attention to what's going on here today. On a day when there's 50 of us here, we represent less than an eighth of 1% of the population of the county. And 50 is above-average attendance. So for every person here, there's well over 800 who aren't, and your decisions impact them all. You guys are charged with a lot more than the will of the electorate. Your sphere of influence extends way beyond the voters. It impacts all the people who can't vote or don't vote, people you've never met. And where there's influence, there's responsibility. And in the absence of responsibility, there's a need for accountability. And the interests of the people of your respective districts might seem to vary dramatically. So thoughtful responses to our respective concerns aren't cookie-cutter material. But there's no good reason retirees in copper can't live in the tidy neighborhood by the golf course, while people at the other end of the county try to recover from a fire, build cottage industries, yeah, even including cannabis cultivation. These ends aren't mutually exclusive. I can imagine ways these seemingly disparate groups of people could work things out, so anyone willing to be content could be. And if you need help resolving what you perceive as conflicts in our interests, reach out to those involved and seek our input. The appearance of conflict is really usually a growth opportunity viewed through a clouded lens. And when the board engages in 3-2 power struggles, we all suffer. We'd be a lot better served by a collaborative, problem-solving-oriented think-tank of five. And when the board is trying to get something done quickly, I usually see a need to pause and reflect. We all know about the Hippocratic principles supposed to govern the medical profession. I think we'd all be better off if it also guided your deliberations and decisions in treating the body politic, you know, first do no harm. Thank you. Good morning.
This will be the last speaker coming up.
Good morning. My name is Jamie White. I was born and raised here. My family goes back to pre-Gold Rush. Knows a few of you up there. I don't normally come in to interfere with the government, listen to what they do, and leave them alone. But it's come to my attention in the last couple of months of a situation with our county government. And since all of you control or are in charge of our government, then you should be aware of this. Not sure if you are. There's a hindrance in building. The Public Works Department has a inspector that goes over the plans that is appearing to try to delay grading permits, really. Both counties, Calaveras and Toolume County contractors have told me in the last two months that they're so sick and tired of this county, five months to a year for a grading permit. It's your job to oversee this. After the fire, the board of supervisors told the community that they would be supporting and promoting growth in the rebuilding. It's not happening. My experience lately with the county surveyor, the acting surveyor, has been extremely nice. But the grading permits, everybody I talked to, all the contractors that I've experienced and talked to, they've all said the same thing about this county. And in the last couple of weeks, I'm also concerned about a couple of other things. One involves the county here and the, and the board of supervisors, where a business was trying to come up in Valley Springs for a wine and beer bar. The property that is in question is zoned for it. And the gentleman in charge of the planning department told the district supervisor that to stay out of it, basically. I'm not sure I wasn't there personally. This is what I was told. The other thing that I've heard is you have a business in San Andreas. Anybody that's lived here for any length of time knows that businesses in San Andreas fail. Not sure why, but they fail. You have one business here that has been here for quite a while. She's doing a wonderful business, a great job for the community. And I was just informed that the head of the San Andreas sanitary department has determined by his own means that porta-potties are septic tanks. So she's not allowed to have septic tanks, or porta-potties, excuse me, on her premises. So she has to quell the, the evening doings that she does. That's destroying business in this community. And you people should be aware of that and at least help and promote her to continue her business. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, moving on to consent agenda.
Consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Is there any board member which would pull an item?
A moment, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Mills, your light's on?
Yeah, I'd be sure. It'd be item eight.
Item eight? Any other item? Any member of staff which would pull an item? No? Any member of the public?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I couldn't hear.
Item eight he pulled.
I was gonna say item eight.
Yes, item eight. Okay, seen the rest of it is okay. We'll move on.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Request that the last item, item, item we're referring to, 8.06, be pulled. This is a much too complicated issue to be resolved.
Sir, this is, this is consent agenda item. That's a regular agenda item. We're talking about consent. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the rest of the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that.
Motion by Supervisor Olivera, second by Supervisor Clapp. Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Passes by 0. Madam Clerk?
Item eight is from the administrative office to authorize the board chair to execute the janitorial services agreement for the sheriff's office facility with Candace's cleaning of Valley Springs, California, for a two-year term in an amount not to exceed $140,465.20 for the first year.
And before we move on to this item, I will recuse myself from this vote, this item. I will reel that my granddaughter works for Candace and has worked for her for a number of years. So I will not be voting on this item, and I will recuse myself, turn the gavel over to Supervisor Guaramendi, and leave the room. So this item is settled.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, at this administrative item. Tim, do you want to speak to it?
Yes, I do. So yes, this item is coming from the administrative office, my office, under our facilities and maintenance. I thought it would be important to kind of talk a little bit of the history of why we're bringing this item forward. For the last year, roughly, one of the challenges that we've had in facilities and maintenance is staffing for janitorial services at the jail administration and sheriff's administration building. The hurdle for that staffing is some of the additional requirements on background checks. The background process, one is lengthy but can be quite intensive. The issues that we have is we frequently lose people through that process who are not cleared. So what we were trying to identify was a way that we could provide the level of service that we want to provide to the sheriff's department, and at the same time, keep the rest of the operations going where we were tying up some of our few people in sheriff's operations. During that process, in December actually, I was at a meeting and actually, through some of the various networking meetings, had discovered that Candace, who I knew as the director for the Friends of the Sheriff, operated her, a local cleaning business that also provided services to a number of similar institutions. I, at that point, actually approached her and, and said, you know, "This might be an opportunity." At the same time, we were in meet-and-confer negotiations with SEIU over concerns on our providing janitorial services in Health and Human Services. We understood where the union's perspective was and agreed that we could provide staffing with HHSA, given that it is down the street from here, very similar operations. But given the potential for staffing impacts, we requested that they would allow us to consider this contract, which they agreed. That led to a kind of a protracted process. We waited until budget cycle, which we knew the existing maintenance agreement with Health and Human Services was going to expire. And then it gave us the opportunity to, to bring this forward once we could add staffing in the budget for Health and Human Services, and then bring this contract to the board. The, the concerns unfortunately unintended on my part was that I didn't quite realize the extent of the potential perception of a conflict of interest, and that being Ms. Keasy also being our current appointed sheriff's campaign manager. Unfortunately, that does create a significant appearance of a conflict, one that was unintended on my part. And I would add to it, the reasons where I felt this was a thing that was warranted to go forward was it was a local vendor. We have historically, where we don't have federal or state restrictions on how we provide service, we have favored local vendors. Our other vendor that we've been using was not a local vendor. They are in Toolume County. And so it gave us an opportunity to bring in a local vendor that did not require an RFP process. That being said, obviously, my office is open to approaching this any way that the board would like to see this brought back.
Thank you. Dennis, you pulled the sign?
Yeah. As we all know, the sheriff's department, we're dealing with an area that is a secured area. And you'd spoke to the need for a background check. That would be a concern, and I didn't see it in the contract, anything about the need for background checks on employees with this particular vendor. The concern would be, do we have people that might be in misdemeanor status probation or some other status that may create an issue for us because we haven't had those background checks completed on their, their employees? It, it also, would we have our own staff doing this work? They do have to sign confidentiality agreements. So does a local vendor then also have to have that same level of understanding that the area that you're working in, it has to, any information you receive or garner there is confidential information? That's, that's one of the three, the three keys would be the background check, confidentiality, working in a secured area. And none of those are spoken to in the contract. Now, this is a, this is unusual that we don't go to RFP here. I would have much rathered us had gone through that process for all of our vendors to be sure that we have the best available product that we're gonna get. So I'm just gonna speak to those points initially and, and see where the board wants to go with that.
Do you want to respond to that? Any others?
Yes. I mean, obviously, background checks, confidentiality, the, the same provisions would apply. I think private organization can usually bring people on faster just through their hiring process, and therefore, they can do that churn faster than traditionally government can. It's, the, I, the sheriff obviously would have the same exact stipulations. On the RFP piece, like I said, I, I don't disagree that we can absolutely do an RFP process. Typically, we do put the local preference in there, given that there really aren't a lot of local cleaning companies that would really rise to that level that would take this on. I bypassed that process in lieu of the contract. Again, though, we can certainly go back out to an RFP for this.
I'd like to see stipulated in the contract somewhere that there is a background check requirement, that there is a need for confidentiality agreements. No matter who we hire for this job, if it was HHS, it probably wouldn't be as, as important, and yet still, it would be to some degree at HHS because of the kind of information that they have as well. So...
With federal dollars, they probably require the more stipulated language.
So I see these two agencies, the sheriff and the HHS departments, as having a need for a higher level than we would in working within the other departments in the county. So I, I think it needs to be part of a contract, and it needs to be clearly understood, the need that that, that be in place.
Clyde, your lights on? Do you have any comments?
I'm good.
Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to hear from Captain Ballard. Can we arrange to have him come over and attend this meeting to find out exactly what procedures, what background checks are required for this type of operation in our jail? And I want to make sure that, from what you told us, Mr. Lutz, that the unions have agreed to this situation? Is that true?
Ms. Hawkins is popping up too.
Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. I have had a meeting with SEIU, and we have talked extensively about this issue. And yes, we have had a meet-and-confer over it, and they have agreed.
Okay. I want to make sure that that area was covered.
Yes.
Excellent.
As for Captain Ballard, if, if the vice chair wishes, we could take a break and see if he is available to come. Since he's up the hill, it should be relatively quick if he is.
I request that if we could. Mr. Vice Chair.
What do we need? Five minutes?
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Or do you want to defer the...
It depends how fast Eddie can walk.
If you're all right, you know, one of the things we could do is we could send a message up to him. We could continue with the agenda, and then maybe we'll get back to board deliberations.
Your choice.
After public comment?
Your choice.
I think that'd be good. Then we'll keep things rolling, see if he can come down here, and then we'll step him in after we finish public comment. Mike, do you have other questions?
No.
Okay. We'll move on to public comment. I too had concerns about meet-and-confer, but if we're okay with labor, we're okay with labor. And Judy, you already addressed that. I'm just repeating. Just nod. Double nod. Okay. And let's move on to public comment. If everybody could be, speak on this topic. We'll move through as quickly as possible. We'll confer afterwards with Captain Ballard when he comes down. Ma'am?
Well, thank you for listening to me today. I just wanted to express that, first, I feel like it's a huge conflict of interest. And second, I think it's a huge amount of money. We could pay somebody $40,000 a year with a background check, have them do that job, and save the county $55,000, which would put another sheriff through training. I think the amount is just phenomenal. I mean, I'm a business owner, but come on. It's huge. Sorry.
George?
My public comment has to do with the chair.
Okay. Very well, then we'll hold it till the next item. Next public speaker.
Where do the funds come from? Is this from the general fund? Are monies coming out of the sheriff's department to pay for this position? And how much do our regular county custodian wages, are they paid? $140,000 seems to me like three employees. Three employees working eight hours a day in the sheriff's department, that seems excessive. I haven't been to the whole facility of the sheriff's department, but I'm just wondering. I was a custodian for Calaveras back in the 80s, and we had to be careful. We had a check of our background to know what information we had access to, what was, you know, confidential or not. And like the lady said, that's $140,000 for one year. So I, I really need to know where the money's coming from, if it's So, I really need to know where the money's coming from, if it's coming out of the general fund, and how much would be coming out of the general fund? And has the, apparently, the SEIU county employees thinks it's okay to go out, but if I was a janitor for the county, and I could be working in the sheriff's department, I would wonder why I was being passed over to not be able to work in the sheriff's department, which I think would be an easier job, because it's not accessible to the public, and the people inside would keep it cleaner, knowing from my experience how messy and inconsiderate the public could be in our public buildings. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Next public speaker?
Do you have a point of order, George? Yes, I do. I wanted to, I wanted to speak on this issue, but I thought you were talking about the regular comment.
We are talking about the regular comments. We're going through the comments on this agenda item at this time.
Okay.
Mr. McManus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Handing out some questions, as I understand that during public comments, the questions will be noted, and after public comment is concluded, the answers will come back to the public. To save any misunderstanding on the questions asked, and then the questions coming back, I've gone ahead and typed them up and submitted them to you, so that we have an accurate copy, and I will just read them word for word. First of all, I want to compliment Supervisor Tofanelli for recusing himself. That would refer to question number six that I had, which I think we can probably disregard, and we don't need to have any comment on that, it's been settled. Starting with question one, when county employees were transferred from the sheriff's department to HHS for cleaning duties, what was the annual expense that went with them? And that would be wages and benefits. So, we know what that work unit cost, and now we have to fill the void created by the transfer. Why was this particular activity outsourced? You may have touched on it, as far as having county employees versus outside contractors. Question number three, how did the county advertise for bids for contracted cleaning services for the sheriff? Didn't see anything there. Number four, how many bids were received, and was the selected bid the lowest cost bid? Number five, I think, I'd like to thank Administrator Lutz for the mea culpa, that there could have been a conflict of interest. I think at the same time, beyond just acknowledging that it may exist, we need to have a ruling on whether in fact it is a conflict of interest, and what have bearing on this item. Number six, like I say, we can disregard. And then, number seven is kind of a general question. Who directed, approved, allowed this very controversial item to be placed on the consent agenda? Normally, when the consent agenda is described, it's supposed to be non-controversial and fairly straightforward. It would seem that there's going to be a lot of controversy on this, and maybe we need to look at how things hit the consent agenda, when they should probably be on the regular agenda for full discussion. Thank you.
Next.
Good morning. Candace Keese, Valley Springs. How are you today? I just want to touch base on a few of the comments that I heard today. First is, the nonprofit and helping with political campaigns, those are volunteer positions. I do not get paid one dime for any of those. Secondly, I want to, people are saying that it's a lot of money. Payroll alone for two people for the sheriff's office is $89,000. That doesn't include my workman's comp, my general liability, the rag laundering, the transportation, the vehicle maintenance, any of that. Next, I only put a 10% markup for administration fees, and what would be the norm in the janitorial industry would have been 15%, 20% markup. So, actually, this is cheaper than if you'd had two county employees. It's cheaper by almost $20,000. You guys have five custodial positions open right now that you can't fill. Last month, four of my employees and myself were cleared with FBI and DOJ, and that was cleared through Lieutenant of Operations. So, that was done. There's five of us. So, that's already been done and cleared. I paid for that out of my pocket, and I'm trying to think what else I can answer for the public. Tim told you, he approached me, because, you know, you guys are having a hard time finding, I think you have two custodians that do a lot of county offices, and so, the work is just not getting done. These people are overwhelmed, and that's why he reached out to me. And if any of you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Do you have five people?
Excuse me, sir. Justin?
Good morning. Justin Catalano, District Two. So, these positions for the custodial job for the county have been posted for quite some time, well over a year. The hourly rate that we're asking is 1322 to 1608. Even if we paid the individual 1608, 40 hours a week, 52 weeks a year, that'd be $33,000 a year. If we bumped that up to $20 an hour, it would be more like $41,000 a year. So, if we put those two together, it's around 80-something thousand, which is significantly less than the $140,000. That's what I have to say.
Next, Captain Ballard, once we finish public comment, I know Supervisor Olivera had a couple of questions. So, we'll get through this, and then you're up. Sorry to rush down.
Sounds like my army days, hurry up and wait.
George?
Vice Chair, you're conducting a great meeting. I'm serious, has a heart attack. My concern is, I know Candy, I know her husband, they're good people. My concern is, is that it didn't go out for bid. And I believe that all contracts should go out for bid, and the person that has the best bid is the person that gets the contract. So, those are my comments with regard to the services. There's the appearance of a conflict of interest, and when there's an appearance, even though the person is a volunteer and does all that volunteer work, which I think is really outstanding, what she's done over the years, but that appearance makes it even more difficult to do that kind of contract. Thank you.
Gina Gonzalez, Angels Camp. First of all, I'd like to say, yes, it is a conflict of interest, in my opinion, and I'm sure I'm not alone. I have personally been attacked by this woman in public, on social media, for no reason other than I questioned something that she was posting. Her Yelp review is terrible. The only review she has is a terrible one. Number three, I see her being the campaign manager of Rick DiBasilio, and her work in a sheriff's office shouldn't be. I talked to Five Claws this morning, they were not offered this position. He was very disappointed in that, because he thought he did a good job, and he takes it as a personal insult that he was not offered. There's no, Mr. Lutz? Sorry. Is there a reason why Mr. Five Claws did not get the offer?
Excuse me?
There was three, there was three other cleaning services that I talked to yesterday. They didn't get offered it either. So, I'm just wondering, what's going on here? The scales are kind of leaning the wrong way. We need to make this available, okay? They say there's positions that are available and open. What advertising are we doing? Are we going to job fairs? There's many job fairs that are happening. Is Calaveras County being represented at those job fairs? I don't think so. Maybe I'm wrong, but I would like to know. Thank you.
Rose Beristiano, SEIU Vice President. And to my knowledge, we have not met and confer on this specific contract.
Other public comment?
House of Labor Taxpayer Association. Boy, it's hard to be a manager nowadays, and you have a responsibility to get the job done, and you have all these rules. I know Candace, and she's a wonderful lady. She's donated an incredible amount of time, and she's raised a lot of money for the sheriff's department. That does give an appearance of a problem, but most important is that the public needs to know that this is done in an even-handed manner, which means that if you must have somebody working there right away, perhaps contract with Candace over a shorter period of time for an emergency solution to keeping the place clean, and then put it out to bid. And Candace may turn out to be the low bidder. Fine, that clears the air. And if she's not, well, that's okay too. And in considering the bids, you consider not just the amount of the bid, but also the background and reputation of the bidder. You have to consider both things. Thank you.
There's a sheriff's race coming up, and we don't know who's going to win. I believe that it creates a very uncomfortable situation for one of the contenders, if he were to win, because the campaign manager of the other party would not, the campaign manager, she's a human being, and human beings have human nature. And so do sheriffs have human nature, they're human beings. And this may not make a lot of sense to you, but I really object to this. This is a complete conflict of interest, and I'm very disappointed in Mr. Lutz, in even thinking about this. Thank you.
Mr. Schopper?
Not a whole lot of feeling either way on this one for me. Something that may want to go out to bid is something to consider. I just want to correct a couple of things that have been said throughout the process, like it's brought up $16 an hour, comes out to approximately $33,000 a year for the county at cost. And we know that with employees, that the county contribution for other benefits, medical and so on and so forth, would push it up in the vicinity of $50,000 per year, per employee on cost, when you're paying them out at $16 an hour, and substantially more as the pay rate goes up. Translucent California reflects that, when you look up people's rates, like because of where I work, people are like, dang, you make $100,000 a year. I don't make close to $100,000 a year. That's the cost of the district, insurance, so on and so forth. So, the juggle on this, you do have to have people that pass background checks and everything else. I do know that Candace's cleaning service does, outside of Calaveras County, does work with multiple government agencies, because all her people are highly qualified and squeaky clean, and that should be something that, you know, if you're going to work at a sheriff's office, there's material there that is, you know, should not be seen by certain people, and the people should be qualified to be able to work in those situations, as she has demonstrated with a lot of the other contracts she has elsewhere in other counties.
Marty?
Good morning, Marty Crane. So, I am extremely involved in our community on many, many, in many areas, as is Candace Keese, for years, as long as I can remember. She has given tirelessly to many different things. She runs the Christmas parade every year, no small feat, and out of the kindness of her heart, it's a big thing for Valley Springs. She's always there when there's something good going on. So, when people come up and try to disparage her name, and say that there's a Yelp or whatever, I don't know what that is, it's someplace where people go and say yes or no, whatever, and there's one statement, please, don't just believe that without checking, you know, go look and see who posted it. Excuse me. So, a lot of people can come up here and say a lot of things, but if you have no supporting documentation to prove it, or nothing to back it up, then please, you're the ones considering all this information that we bring you, cast off the stuff that isn't relevant or isn't supported. Also, the sheriff's department, regardless of who is there as sheriff, is nonpartisan. The only time we bring politics into it is when we bring politics into it, so let's keep the politics out. Our sheriff is there to keep the public safe, regardless of who that sheriff is. And if the next one coming in is offended by any of this, well, then he needs to make sure that the politics stay out of it. So, that's all I have to say, except that I've known Candace for many, many years, and I trust her with everything. And she's worked with, like was said before, with other government agencies, and of course, she has to dot her i's and cross her t's, and not all cleaning agencies do that. An RFP, I don't, I don't know, did I miss something? Did we do an RFP? We usually do, and I'm wondering why we didn't, but thank you.
Thank you. So, other public comment? Mr. Wilson?
Good morning, gentlemen. Seems like, there seems to be an air of distrust among the public and the board and the county. Seems like somebody's trying to run something through without going through the proper steps. Not surprising with this board, especially a few members of it. Anyway, it's hard to say. Should probably have gone through the procedure. We can't hire people, people don't want to work for the county, I wonder why that is. Wonder why people wouldn't want to work for Calaveras County? Wonder why people wouldn't want to clean toilets at Calaveras County? Wonder why we don't use inmate staff? You know? When I got in trouble before, I had to do a couple of days picking up trash along the side of the highway. I had to work in the park. I had to do some kind of community service. Those people, we know what they're doing, we know what they're there for. They can't scrub toilets, they can't sweep floors. $140,000 for the first year of a contract, no bid contract. No bid contract. Gee, wish I'd have known about that. I need a new job. Certain members of this board decided they didn't like what I did for a living anymore, so they took my taxes, and they took my money, and then they told me, go destroy your product, because you know what? Your product's no longer legal in the state of California because of our vote. So, we had to destroy about $100,000. I need to make that money up, folks. I want to bid on this contract. I think we need to have this bid. I think we need to go out and get competent, competitive bids, and if Ms. Keese's bid is either the lowest, or what we consider the best, because her people are the best, they've passed their background checks, they've been screened by the FBI, the CIA, and World Trade Organization. After all, to deliver marijuana in Angels Camp, you have to pass a worldwide background check. It costs us $3,000 per individual, even if you were born, raised, and lived your whole life in Angels Camp. Thank you.
You had a point of order? Public comment? See no further public comment, we'll move back to deliberations?
Do you want me to respond to some of those questions, Mr. Vice Chair?
Well, let's see if the board wants to reflect those questions back to staff. Mr. Edison?
Mr. Ballard?
Mr. Edison, we just Mr. Edison, we just closed public comment.
I ran.
How would that be fair to everybody else?
Captain Ballard, did you want to talk about this?
You guys got me like at a big disadvantage. I was on the way to go pick up some arrestees. So, I think I would need a specific question to be able to talk about it. I think, you know, it's probably more in the realm of operations, the captain there that, or that side, Maria Hensley, which may have done the contract thing. I had no part of this.
Captain, exactly is what I want to ask you, is dealing with operations. When you have a custodial situation such as a jail or a prison, every member that goes into that facility, employee, or subcontractor, or whatever, are there specific background requirements to clear those up and above a normal background check for an employee for the county? Are you aware of anything like that?
Our standard backgrounds for any civilians to go in there, and I'm just going to address it towards civilians, because you know, in the jail, I use a lot of civilians that come in, and we do backgrounds on them, obviously, to make sure, check their integrity, make sure that they're not career criminals and those types of things.
Okay. Do you do that background check, or does HR do that background check?
We have a background investigator do them.
Thank you. So, that's a specific requirement for a custodial situation, correct?
If they're entering the jail, absolutely.
Okay. Let's talk about procedures. How often are the facilities cleaned by janitorial service?
Within the current jail right now?
Right now.
And this is where I'll talk, you know, I have an administrative section up front in the jail that is cleaned by civilian staff. The rest of the jail is cleaned by inmate workers.
All right. So, in the custodial areas, inmate workers do the cleaning?
Inside, yes.
Inside?
Inside the secure perimeter, they do the cleaning, yes.
Okay. And that is the actual, want of a better word, the actual cells where people are housed? Is that correct?
Oh, and booking, you know, the kitchen, everything inside the, civilian staff, you remember, the jail's about 80,000 square foot?
Okay.
So, I think civilian staff cleans approximately, I would say, in 8,000 square foot. The rest is cleaned by inmate workers.
Is there any procedure to check those workers, those inmate workers, when those services are completed? Any searches to see if any contraband has been displaced by those employees?
They are searched every time, before they go back to housing, after they leave their housing unit, for, you know, smuggling anything back, weapons, food items, extra clothing, you know, if they did the laundry or something like that, yes.
Captain Ballard, does that happen in our jail?
It does.
Is that something that we pay very close attention to?
Well, we better be, and yes, we do. And, I mean, you know, proof is in the pudding. We haven't had, we've had one weapon in that jail in four years of operation, so it has mandatory searching every day.
So, let's get back to the operations, the administrative area. These are the areas serviced by our contract janitorial services, is that correct? Those areas?
Well, the areas, you know, currently, the custodial, I thought we did through the county. You know, we didn't have a specific contract.
Okay. So, that contract, or that entity, be it county employees or an outside contractor, they would not only do the jail administrative areas, they would probably do the administrative areas here. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, this contract, is it just for this jail, or is it for the entire county?
I can't answer that, sir. Like I said, you got me at an extreme disadvantage. I had no...
I'm not a problem, Captain. Mr. Lutz?
Yeah. The area specific to this contract is all of the sheriff's administrative headquarters and the jail administrative area. It does not include any other parts of the county campus.
So, that would include the sheriff's administration building and the facilities, the administrative facilities at the jail? Two separate buildings, quarant log area, three floors, or two floors at the sheriff's department, two floors at the jail?
One floor.
How often are those services performed?
Typically, they come in at nighttime, and I'm just going to give you a guess, probably two or three times a week, and it's based on, you know, put the trash outside the door. I'm not there when they come in. It's always done in the evening hours when there's nobody there. So, a couple times a week, maybe three times a week, is what I've noticed.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that we were clear on the custodial restricted areas versus the administrative areas, and you've done that very well. Thank you, Captain. Lieutenant, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
I think...
Lieutenant left? Okay. Thank you for coming over, Captain. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Fellow board members, a lot of questions put forward by the public. Do you have any of those questions you want to convey on to staff? Do they have an answer for deliberation?
Well, I think the thing is, from my side, and I'm going to discount this conflict of interest discussion, because I think this has to go back to a layered approach. Bearclaw, their contract is ending?
That's correct. It's ending September, the end of September is when five clock...
End of September. And is this a situation, if we were to take this to an RFP, because I didn't hear that the union had agreed to a meet and confer here, that we could do a temp hire to fill the gap?
Yeah, there were two questions there. One, on the union piece, we're already going to be researching that, because I believe the statement from a union employee was inaccurate. If that's the case, we'll pursue legal remedies with the union for conveying poor information at a board meeting.
I had spoke with the union on several different occasions, because we do have a high turnover with the custodial staff due to the fact that we've had several that can't pass the background check. The background check is very extensive. It's not like what other employees go through, and so there is a very high dropout rate. Not only can they not pass the background, there may be cases where we make the job offer to them, they don't return the paperwork. They typically have two weeks to return the packet. The packet's very extensive, and they don't get it turned in. And because of that, we have this very high turnover. And so, it also creates kind of a unfair level or disparate impact in that classification. And so, those were the discussions that I had with the union specifically on several different occasions, and so that by us being able to add the positions, or add the contract to the sheriff's department, we would be able to get more, be able to fill those positions faster. They still have to be able to pass a DOJ fingerprinting, because many of the departments, such as the DA probation, you have to pass the CLUTs requirements. And so, there's still the federal fingerprinting that they have to pass, but it's not nearly as extensive as the sheriff's background check. And so, we would be able to fill those positions faster. And then also, just, I would like to add that we do go to job fairs. In fact, this year, we've gone to more job fairs than Calaveras has gone to in the last 15 years. And we were also at the resume fair in Arnold a few weeks ago. And so, we have participated, and we got several resumes for custodians out of that particular job fair. And so, we advertise heavily, and we do get applications, but like I said, due to the dropout rate because of the background check, we struggle with that classification.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Ms. Hawkins, Michael.
Mr. Vice Chair, I have a question. I do have a continuing question to that point, is that if the independent contractor is clearing their people through DOJ, and yet I'm hearing from the sheriff's department, we do our own background check. And I know there's a difficulty involved in this, because I was a red badge contractor at Livermore Lab, that there is a dropout rate that's involved, and it's tough finding staff to fill those positions that are critical need. How are we, are you able to accept their DOJ report that they do, their background and that they do as an independent contractor?
So, that is up to the sheriff's department. When we do a background and we get the packet from the background investigator, then the sheriff's department sits down and says if that person is cleared to be in the sheriff's department or not. So, I am sure they probably are going to do the same type of process, because they are very particular about who goes in to their department.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair, I do have one question. I don't know if we can answer that right now. I'm very concerned about the statement made by the SEIU representative and statements made here. Is there, how are we going to justify those statements?
I am very concerned with that statement also, and I have already sent out an email to the representatives of SEIU, the president and their field rep, to have a meeting immediately to clear up any misunderstandings.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Sure. Are there any other questions from the board as far as deliberation?
Yeah, I would like to have a statement from county council on the conflict. I mean, that's what's been thrown around, so I'd like to have if it is or isn't.
I would not recommend that we have a public discussion about it. I haven't analyzed the situation in full. I will say that there are times when the technical requirements under the FPPC for a financial conflict of interest might be different than something that just has bad optics. I'm not sure, I don't have enough details right now, so I can't say with any certainty, but I wouldn't recommend that we have this discussion unless there was a vote to waive attorney-client on this.
Then, I would like to see this table then brought back later with all these questions answered. I'd like to have someone from the union to find out if that is true, what the statement was, and if it's a conflict, because I would vote on this today.
Mr. Lutz, do you want to have rebuttal to any of this?
No, not a rebuttal, per se. I mean, I think everybody brought up valid points and questions, and I'll try and go through a few of those on the public comments. On the funding source, and I think that was Bonnie's question, this is general fund. You know, it was general fund for custodial, it was general fund, you know, for the contract. The wages, so I did want to speak to that a little bit, and I think one of the comments spoke to the starting wage. It's important to note a couple of things. One is, we're recruiting for custodian one. Typically, what we would be wanting to do is have a higher-level custodian plus a lower-level custodian, but for sake of arguments, so I pulled our actual payroll information that goes into our budget. On a custodian one, this is at the B step, so at your more entry level, the, once you add in benefits, your custodial one costs you about $51,000, $50,876 per year. And that's going to vary also based on what level of health insurance they choose. If it's family health insurance, they get a higher amount than if it's just for themselves.
Fully loaded?
That's fully loaded. When you look at your facility's worker three position, that obviously is going to be making much more money. That tops out around 20, actually, no, step B is $23. That, when you look at the loaded cost, is up to the $72,000 per year, when you add in benefits, health insurance, things like that. So, it, you know, it's difficult, and it's one of the things that we try and save in bargaining, where employees, they see their paycheck, but they don't always see the hidden cost to what the county pays employees, and that's for their health insurance and the retirement, all of those things that go along with a worker. I also, going back to Mr. McManus's questions, and I think I tried to speak to those in my opening piece, obviously, we did not advertise this for bid, it did not go out to bid. That is something that we can look at and go back and do that. The conflict, I will again say, unfortunately, my being newer to the politics of Calaveras County, I missed this one. I wish I had known about the campaign manager piece. My initial rationale for why I had approached Ms. Keasy is that, quite frankly, I'm sorry, Captain Ballard and anyone else who, you know, hears this from the sheriff's office, but the sheriff's office can be a difficult customer. They have high demands, and we want to provide the level of service that they're asking for. My feeling was, given that I knew Ms. Keasy was over the friends of the sheriff, that obviously she has an orientation geared toward providing a high level of service to our sheriff's department, or at least sheriff's employees, and I felt that would make her a good fit for this position. But I fully take the fact that it was my error in missing the perception of the conflict. All I can say is, one, I did not speak to Rick about my thinking of this until after I had come to the conclusion and had the discussion with Ms. Keasy, and again, was not made aware of the campaign manager piece. So, again, I apologize that this has created a controversial item in terms of the, who placed it on consent calendar, that was the last item. Through agenda review process, that's a conversation that the chair, the vice chair, if he's present, the board clerk, and myself discuss. I don't recall that I was actually at that meeting with the discussion on why this stayed on consent or not, other than it was a contract, but unfortunately, I wasn't there to be able to relay what the context of why it was decided to place it on consent. So, I hope I answered all of the questions.
So, if I could just hop in there real quick?
Sure.
We did not have agenda review for this meeting, because there was not enough of the players to have it.
That's why I don't remember it.
Ms. Hawkins?
Yes, I would like to add one more thing. I do have an email from the SEIU, from SEIU, the field rep, that was at the meeting, and it does state that I just sent an email to Bill Patron clarifying our position on this. You are correct in that we agreed to this with the addition of the SEIU in the unit, SEIU members, so.
So, that's verified?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair, one quick question.
Surely.
County council, how long would it take for you to research this? Could it be done in the 15-minute break? I know that's kind of putting you on the spot there, Julie, but you're on the spot.
Normally, I mean, to do a good FPPC analysis, it's an eight-step analysis. So, I mean, I think it would be infeasible to do this in a short, you know, in a single meeting. I mean, unless I did it over lunch, but again, I don't feel, again, we'd be discussing my analysis then in open, you know, in an open meeting. I'm not sure that that's really what you want. I'm more than happy to do a memo to you on the conflict analysis, and then we can bring it back if the board wants to. Again, my initial thought is, I mean, there are specific levels of relationship that are usually enumerated for what constitutes a technical conflict of interest. For example, we had Supervisor Tofanelli with a grandchild who worked for the company, and I think, I haven't looked, that a grandchild would fit pretty cleanly within the type of relationship. Campaign manager is a little bit more complicated, a little bit more of a stretch. It might turn out to just be something that has an appearance which can still be important without being technical. I don't have a solid answer for the board that quickly.
Could you make a phone call to the FPPC?
They're not going to go...
I mean, you've got some horsepower, you're county council.
They would tell me that they don't practice law, that they just, they're not, most of the people who work there that I'm going to get in touch with would not actually be lawyers. And again, these are, sometimes these are also risk decisions and not yes or no answers, but...
I understand.
Okay.
Is there any urgency to any interruption of services? Mr. Lutz? I mean, are we in a dire situation?
It would be nice if I could grab Patrick Martin to ask. I don't know how many people he currently has on staff that have cleared background. I don't know if Ms. Hawkins knows offhand either, to be able to answer that question, because that would really be the, right now, we're providing service. So, my feeling is, we would be okay. The challenge would be when five clock expires, we have committed to HHSA to be able to provide the level of service that they had prior to that. So, I think that's the challenge, and I don't know how many custodial staff we've been able to fill of those vacancies.
I know that we've had some resignations. We do have two staff members that can... I know that we, we've had some resignations. We do have two staff members that can clean the sheriff's department, one of them being a, a lead supervisor, and so that makes it a challenge when she needs to, to be out and about. But we, so that leaves mainly one person that can clean the sheriff's department. It, it, it is a stretch right now. We, we are understaffed.
Okay. Let's, you know, if I can make a comment, the, it's unclear if we've got a time issue. I appreciate your candor in discussing, and welcome to Calaveras County politics. Always nice to think things are simple and find out they're not. But anyway, we are here, and it sounds like we've resolved the SEIU issue. Bonnie, did you have one last thing you wanted to say before we move forward here?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board, Bonnie Rich administration. I placed this item on consent. I'm learning through the process a lot about Calaveras. I will do better next time. Everything Supervisor Mills said about the HIPAA compliance, the confidentiality and the background checks, especially for the SO and for HHSA and many other departments in our county, those are very critical provisions to include in our contracts, and we should do that. I don't have any reason putting, there is no reason why we could not put this out for a formal competitive selection process. One of the amazing things that I've, and I'll talk about the timing about that in a minute, but one of the amazing things that I've learned about this community in the short time that I've been here is that these folks are very passionate about Calaveras County. It is also a very small community. You're going to be hard-pressed to find people that don't know other people, that don't work for other people. I cannot confirm this at this time, but I will let you know that the current contractor for HHSA, Five Claw, also has a child that is, or was, some time ago, employed by the sheriff's office. It's going to be tough to get through that, but what I think is important is that if we engage a formal competitive selection process, that we put the onus on the respondents to notice us that there is a potential conflict. I would recommend, if, if this makes the most sense, is to allow us to put it out for bid, if the CIO and the board concur, but give me a little time to do that. I have a number of major facility infrastructure capital improvement projects that I'm working on right now. I am also working very closely with Michelle Patterson, our Director of OES, on getting some critical transportation infrastructure projects completed as a result of disaster events. So, I would, I would ask that the board allow Kristen Brink, the HHSA director, to extend her current contract with Fly, Five Claw, excuse me, for another month or two, to give me adequate time to go through that process. That's all that I would ask at this time.
Thank you, Bonnie. All right, gentlemen, how do you want to proceed? Anybody got a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion, because Bonnie, you made, you made the most sense here in this discussion, and to take it, take it out of the personal realm and into the business realm, to, to do this as an RFP would provide that. And I was concerned about, you know, are we going to be able to cover staffing-wise during the interim while we make something happen here and not leave anybody short? So, I would, I would move that we, we direct staff to the RFP process on it and ensure that these conflict of interest discussions and anything else, so we can also get a true comparison between the costs. If we provide this service from a county level, what does that cost? What is a contractor's cost going to be? What are the comparables? We really didn't see that in this discussion. There's something else that's in this discussion summary that you have here, and it's in paragraph two. I'm sorry, adding into the motion here for some reason, is the statement, "In the amount not to exceed $130,000 for a two-year term." Actually, shouldn't that be $130,000 a year for a two-year term? Okay, just another point is, is that this is actually a $260,000 contract, not a $130,000 contract. So, that's what we, we know going in.
Supervisor Mills, Bonnie Rich administration, again, the contract as to proposal was submitted by Ms. Kezey was for $130,000 and some dollars and change for a one-year period. Knowing that this was a new contract, and knowing that when the contractor got in there, the sheriff's department might decide that they have some additional unique needs, one-time services, I took it upon myself to build in an additional $10,000 in the event that they needed it. There's no guarantee that they needed it, but the, but generally speaking, the, the contract cost, the guaranteed absolute contract cost was the $130,000.
Thank you.
If that helps.
I guess maybe what I should do is just restate the motion to state that I'm asking to direct staff to, to do an RFP process on this and to ensure that the conflict of interest issues are fully vetted, and that in the meantime, that we provide staff the ability to temporary hire, extend contracts as needed to be sure that our needs are met in the short term.
Is there a second?
Discussion before a second?
Discussion on the motion.
For the purpose of discussion on the motion.
Please.
Is there a projected timeline or, County Council, I would really like to have this conflict of interest issue cleared up, and I hate to do this to you, but I'm going to do it to you. What's it going to take to get this, this matter researched and advising the board? Are we looking at five days, 10 days, 20 days?
No, I think that this could be, I mean, this is something, personally, I'm going on vacation, but, but I, but I think, but I think that, certainly, the, you know, the analysis could probably be done within, you know, five to seven days.
Excellent. That, that, that's excellent, and I would second the motion.
Further discussion? I, I apologize to the, to our vendors who, you know, you've now got to go into RFP process, and your card's already on the table. Nonetheless, we have a motion, we have a second, a call for a vote.
Could I ask for a question before the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I understand the direction of the motion, so is there a date? Certain that you're going to want this item to come back, or are we talking about just in the, at a future meeting when it is done?
At a future meeting, ma'am.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Motion passes four zero.
Jerry, do we want to take a break and bring it back in?
Two-minute break.
Two-minute?
No, we need a 15-minute break, please.
Ten-minute, fifteen-minute break.
Federal laws, that's 15 minutes.
Here we go. We're back in session. Madam Clerk?
Item 14 is from the Office of Emergency Services to receive an update on disaster recovery activity throughout Calaveras County for Butte Fire 2015, tree mortality 2015, and winter storms 2017.
Good morning, Board. Michelle Patterson, OES Director for Calaveras County. I'm going to hand these over to the board clerk. There's some handouts for the public if they wish to take them, and then I'm going to. Okay, so at this point, turn the mic on. There we go. At this point, this presentation should be looking pretty familiar, and so I'll just, just let you know that we're just going to go through the bolded areas in the presentation. Those are the updates from the last presentation to today, so it should go rather quickly. Again, we're, we're doing recovery on Butte Fire, winter storms, and tree mortalities in this presentation. So, we'll start off with Butte Fire, PW 78 is the green trees. We are still waiting for FEMA to respond to our reversion request to take down the additional trees. We do have, at the board meeting on June 26th, the Tetra Tech contract was passed by this board to, to start that process, and then the Phillips and Jordan contract for the tree cutting is, is in process as well, and I believe will be on either one, not the next one, but perhaps the one after that. Been working with Admin on that contract and Public Works, so that's, that's the status on that project. PW 88 Roads, excuse me, this is, I think, the biggest update so far in the last month, is that we are actually doing construction on the Butte Fire roads, and I wish I had, had the opportunity to update this slide slightly further, because Jeremy from my office and Scott from Public Works drove over a brand-new paved road this morning and sent me a picture of that. So, this is going really well, the, the collaboration that we have with Public Works and their road crew and their leadership has been phenomenal in getting this project going. So, we are working on getting the rest of these sites addressed in the next few months, or a few weeks, few months, getting the scheduling done. With the FHWA roads, Jeremy, Matt Boyer, and myself have been working with Caltrans and FHWA on the possibility of a second extension in order to get those projects completed, and we will come back to the board with an update on that next time. Matt is meeting with Caltrans on our behalf next week. For Blagan Road, the update is that we cleared our CEQA notice of exemption, and we will be, I've been working, as Bonnie mentioned earlier, on a different topic. We've been working a lot together to get the, the contracts and all of the RFPs out for the various pieces of this, and so she has a conversation that she's going to have today with CalOES, who was reviewing our RFP before we put it out, to make sure that we've crossed all our i's and dotted all our t's. So, we expect that to be released within the next 10 days to do the hydro report on the Blagan project. Gwen Mine Road, there was public comment earlier regarding Gwen Mine Road. Jeremy was out there on Friday doing a site visit to collect new pictures of that particular project, so that we can submit all of the documentation needed to the various agencies to get the permitting process going for that. It is, there, there are multiple sites along Gwen Mine Road that are failing, as you can see in this picture, and Matt Boyer and I are going to be discussing this particular project further, and I, I've reached out to the, the person that made the public comment regarding Gwen Mine Road, so that hopefully we can get that resolved in a positive way. For Murphy's Drive culvert crossing, we did clear our CEQA on June 30th, and we have submitted all of the documentation necessary to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to get a permit for de-watering that waterway in order to fix the, the culvert crossing. So, at this point, again, I'm working with Bonnie on the RFPs for all of the requisite studies, and we are waiting on a response from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers regarding that permitting process. Penn Gulch, this, this also cleared at CEQA on June 30th, so this is one of the, the ones that Public Works actually has all of the materials needed to complete this project already, and so we're just, we, we met yesterday as, as the sort of working group team to get this on the schedule, so that hopefully within the next couple of weeks, this project can be completed as well. Canyon View is one of the other really complicated projects. Jeremy was out here on last Thursday, again, taking new photographs to submit to the state and federal agencies involved in the process for this project. As you can see, it's quite a large slide that had occurred, and we are working on getting those RFPs out for the requisite studies to get this completed.
I know that the Utica Water Project has that flume right there. Is there going to be any impact during the construction phase to their flume, and do they need to be involved in any way?
I'm, I'm sure that will be a, something that comes up during the engineering process for this. I know that there was, there could have been impact this past winter on that flume with the, the stability of this slot, of this slide area, so, but we will be working with the, the partners.
Michelle, thank you for coming. I understand that, that flume condition is deteriorating in several places to the point where it could be a hazard and interrupt service. Is that going to influence any of our construction?
The condition of the flume itself?
Yeah, as far as the impacts on it and what Utica Power and Water has to accomplish to get our projects finished.
Right. We haven't had those conversations yet with Utica, and at this time, I'm, I'm unfamiliar with the condition of that flume, other than it could have been impacted if this slide continued to go.
Okay, thank you.
Haver Road, we've not made any progress on Haver Road in the past month, but again, we, we've been out there. We know what needs to be done as far as the, the RFP process to get the requisite studies complete, and so, again, Admin and I are working on that. Jeremy's actually out on this site today, Diamond 20 and CSA 4. He and Scott are out there making sure that what needs to be done can be done, and we expect that this will be on the schedule to be finished, as it was 85% complete at one point within the next couple of weeks. So, we're, we're working closely with Matt and his leadership team to, to schedule these projects, so that we keep making progress on, on all fronts.
Yeah, Michelle, I need to interrupt one more time.
Sure.
We have a lot of projects. Are these going to be completed by the end of the year, do you think, as far as shovels in the ground?
As far as shovel, I'm hoping so, that, I mean, we're, we're pushing hard on, on getting all of these projects to a point where we can get shovels in the ground. It really is going to depend in large part, sort of, on, on the other state federal partners that we're dealing with.
Okay.
But we're doing as much as we can, as fast as we can.
Thank you.
Yeah. Again, we have some federal highway roads that were impacted by the winter storms. We still need to submit the packages for these, but we have been concentrating on the packages needed to complete the Butte Fire federal highway roads. So, these are still in queue to be, to be worked on soon. So, just a quick status of kind of where we're at with tasks. OES is still managing all the environmental and permitting processes, managing all the RFP processes that need to be conducted for, you know, requisite studies or requisite monitoring that needs to occur. The road work has commenced, which is a huge milestone for us. We have been using rented equipment, which is making the work go a lot faster, and that is a reimbursable cost. And I do have the recruitment open right now for our department analyst, which is going to help kind of expedite us through this process of paperwork and contracting and all of the other pieces, so that we can have, build up some more capacity in our office to, to push through this and get it done. And that recruitment closes this coming Monday. So, with that, I'd like to invite Dr. Richard Harris up to the podium to speak on behalf of TSS and our tree mortality project.
Hi, everybody. Haven't met anybody but you, Michael, I think, and I've heard about the rest of you, so.
[laughter]
I'm, I am the designated program manager for the, for the tree mortality program on behalf of TSS, so I'm basically the guy that, you know, pushes all the buttons and hopes for the best. We have, I think you all know, we have our field foresters out there. We have three field foresters, and we also have Sharon, who used to work with you, who's working in public outreach with us. My personal background, if you, if you care to know, is I've been a, I registered professional forester for almost 35 years, 36 years, I guess now. And before I started working as a consultant, I was the Extension Forestry Specialist on the Berkeley campus for 20 years, and I also worked as the Extension Forester in Humboldt County. So, I've got a, you know, I've got the creds, so to speak. Anyway, I'm also working on tree mortality in Amador and Placer County, so this is, this has been the name of the game for me for the last two years, and it's pretty interesting to see how it's evolved, to tell you the truth. Well, just to give you an update on our projects, as you well know, I think Pine Brook is finished. We, we cut all the trees there. We submitted everything we could to, to Bonnie, so that she could apply for the OES reimbursement. We're just about finished with Project 2 in Blue Lake Springs, Fly-in Acres. As of this morning, we're about 85% done. They have to bring in a bucket truck to get a few really nasty trees around houses over there, so that's going to take place this week. Everything's gone really well. I've got a few pictures here from Project 2. Knock on wood, we haven't had a lot of complaints. Knock on wood, we haven't had a lot of complaints. I haven't heard any complaints from people so far, except one person called me because we had, temporarily had to leave a tree on our property, but then we were able to get it off. So we have, unlike PG&E, we are taking away all the trees. We're taking away all the slash. And all the trees are going to, I can't remember the name of the grinding place, they're being made into sawdust or animal bedding, I'm not sure exactly what. They're not being used as sawlogs, but the contractor has managed to get rid of all the trees. So the Project 2 is, was a big project, 365 trees, and it's gone pretty well. The next project, Project 3, we have our pre-ops meeting on Monday, and that's also Blue Lake Springs, Lilac Park, Grizzly Ridge, and a little bit of Fly-in Acres. I think Bonnie is just about ready to release the ITB for Project 4, and that would be Big Trees Village, south of Boards Crossing. Our Project 4A is Big Trees Village, north of Boards Crossing, plus Sky High Ranch. Okay? And then we've also started, we have Project 5, which is Meadowmont, Lakemont, White Pines, Blue Lake Springs, 14, 15, 16. I'm still, got that open in terms of receiving right-of-entry forms. Probably going to button it up in the next few days, and then we're going to put it on ITB for Project 5. One of the most interesting things about working over there in Blue Lake Springs right now is that you may know that the water, the water company is going to replace all their mains along all their roads in Blue Lake Springs. So I'm having to coordinate very closely with, you know, who's doing what where, so that we don't end up butting heads with, you know, the contractors who are doing the main replacement, it's mainline replacements, so it's a big deal. And that's going to be real interesting with Project 3, I can tell you right now. The other thing we've done is, you know, we have three stages here. We go into the neighborhoods, we identify parcels that have dead trees on them, I send out the right-of-entry forms, we get those back, then we send out the foresters to mark the trees, then we contract for the removal of the trees. So there's three stages. So we've gone out to West Point, and we've collected parcel data on 159 parcels, and I've mailed out the right-of-entry forms to the West Point people that have dead trees on their property. So we'll be shifting over to West Point when I get enough ROEs back. I'm starting to hear from Jeremy about people having concerns down in Murphy's, and also I've gotten some calls from people in Avery. We're going to have to do some, you know, some horse trading here, working on both sides of the county, to try to, you know, meet these needs. One of the things that's really happening is that these trees are starting to fall over. And, you know, time is really of the essence, and one of the most frustrating things is that the right-of-entry forms don't just come in automatically. I mean, people, they see an opportunity to get a free ride to get these trees out, and they don't do anything about it. And it's very frustrating. But the delays, I think, are getting critical. And not only that, in terms of right-of-entry forms that come in and don't come in, there's some number of parcels out there that still have dead trees on them, where we haven't gotten right-of-entry forms. What's going to happen to those trees? They still pose a risk to the county. Strictly speaking, the liability belongs to the property owner. So this is something we're going to have to deal with head-on, and all the 10 counties are going to have to deal with it head-on, is how they're going to deal with these residual parcels where they've been non-responsive. And, you know, people are thinking about some kind of hazard abatement ordinances, or, I'm not sure where we're going to go with all that, but I frankly can't understand why people don't take advantage of the programs. I really don't know. And we see it in every county. Okay, so then we have our Project 7, which is BLM, outside of the Butte Fire footprint. There's a bunch of parcels out there that have a lot of dead trees on them, and we're starting the process of getting engaged with the BLM to mark those trees and set them up for removal. We've done this in Amador County, and we've done it with, we're doing it with the Forest Service in Amador County. We'll be doing it with the Forest Service here as well. We started that ball rolling in terms of, we need to have a letter that comes from the county requesting the Forest Service to get some of the NEPA clearance done on these parcels, but we're going to be moving along onto the federal lands soon. This is Project 2. What you're looking at at the left is Upper Moran Road, where the trees have been cleared, and then the slash has been masticated and spread back on the parcel for erosion control. We've got signs out in the neighborhoods. For those of you that have seen parcels that we worked, we have, we've been posting yard signs to try to promote the program. There are some of our logs that are stacked up there for removal. This parcel on the bottom here, where he's stepping up that steep slope, this was a particularly difficult area on Spring Valley Road in Blue Lake Springs, and there were about 60 trees to remove and lots of bald-faced hornets. So these guys were getting stung to beat the band, and, you know, it was very unfortunate. They finally did get some bee repellent, but there's some really difficult falling on Spring Valley Road, and they did a great job. I mean, it's clean as a whistle, except for all the PG&E logs. Okay? So this is Project 3, this is where we're going next, and, you know, it's basically the complement to Project 2 on the other side of Blue Lake Springs, other side of Moran Road, and, you know, also Grizzly Ridge, Lilac Park, and the rest of Fly-in Acres. Next slide. So our outreach efforts are key. We've put out yard signs, we've added that, or over Highway 4, to try to get people to turn in their forms. We've been working with the website, Sharon and I have been working with the website to try to bring it up to date. We're talking about community meetings. We had the Firewise Communities Meeting in Arnold. We're talking about a town hall meeting in West Point. Have you heard about it yet?
No, actually. Actually, I was going to make a comment, that if you've mailed out ROEs, I had not heard that either, the letters, and I would hope that you would involve us. I think you've got a pretty good grip on how to communicate with my district, and I would like to have that opportunity.
Yeah, definitely. Okay.
And then the horse trading comment, that will be a board decision. Don't start trading horses.
Well, prioritization, and Michelle and I are going to talk about this today, is prioritizing projects when really they're all over the place, right?
Well, I think Michelle's pretty good at convincing me about stuff, but it's going to take some convincing if you think we're not going to West Point on Project 6.
Yeah. Well, we're going to be done, I think, with the Blue Lake Springs-Arnold area, pretty quick here. I mean, we've only got to get down to Avery and Murphy's, and then I think we'll be pretty much done with that. So we'll be done with that by the end of the summer.
So that means, to just jump in here, that means that being in the West Point is sometime this fall, and trying to get the majority of the...
Well, we're trying to do things concurrently, right? So we want to get something going in West Point, and then we want to go to Willseville and Glencoe as well, because, you know, there's lots of dead trees out there. There's a lot of balls to juggle here. So we have brought on another forester, Jason Smith, who lives up by Blue Lake Springs. He's been working with us. We're probably, we're going to bring another forester in, who is Mike De La Sow from, he actually worked as a Cooperative Extension Forestry Specialist up in Plumas County, just retired, and we're bringing him, bringing him in the end of July or August. We're looking for people, field people, to help us out here, because we've got a lot of, a lot of ground to cover, right? A lot of ground to cover. Okay, so there's other things that we're covering here, like, one thing I wanted to note is that, you know, they've got the new Forest Service results of their aerial overflights, showing another million dead trees in Calaveras County over the last year, and we are seeing new mortality out there. We are seeing trees that are currently being attacked by beetles, or in some cases, that are dying from other causes. So it's not over. Sorry, didn't want to take so long.
Thank you, Richard.
Any questions?
Oh, quick question. So basically, your biggest hurdle right now is the right-of-entry forms, correct? If they lag on that, then they lag your production.
Well, the right-of-entry forms, I've got 1,400 of them out there, and the return rate's about 60%.
60%.
Yeah. I'll go over this with Michelle, she can brief you later.
Okay. Thank you, Doc.
Okay, and I would be remiss if I didn't plug Calaveras Alert. We've had a few incidents recently in the county where we have put out an alert, and we really need the residents to sign up for Calaveras Alert, so that we can notify them of emergency situations. And with that, happy to take any questions.
Don't forget your Facebook page.
Oh, yes, and my Facebook page. Please like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter.
Mr. Patterson, I don't have a question, I have a comment. I'm receiving numerous communications about the job you're doing for my constituents and my people in Blue Lake Springs and District 3, and they're saying you're doing a fine job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Red Germany, your light phone.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Supervisor Olivera's comments. I know you are cleaning up stuff from behind and preparing stuff for the future. Thank you very much for your work, and Jeremy's as well. You guys are a good team, and I appreciate all that you're getting done. See here, and I also want to thank the Public Works staff that is out doing the road work. I think our citizens enjoy seeing their neighbors out there working and getting things fixed up for all of us, so I appreciate that, and Scott Anderson and his team as well. I do have a quick question, and this is actually, I was hoping Peter Mauer would be here, and this is related to the disaster recovery. In District 2, we've got, oh, there he is, perfect. Peter, you and I talked briefly about this before, but we've got certain policies that we put in place immediately following the Butte Fire, that were designed to help people rebuild their homes and get started. Things, ordinances around trailers and other projects that were going on. I know we have an ordinance that allowed us to not work within the confines of having, you could able to put a, let me try to talk clearly. We have, we were able to put in place a policy that allowed people to build the garages first, and then move forward on their houses in the Butte Fire Zone. I wanted to know if we'd done any research regarding those policies? Have they worked? And more important, people are not building, rebuilding as quickly as we'd hoped they would. There's a million reasons for that. Are there policies that we should extend as a board to allow people to try to build and rebuild their lives up there? And I wanted to sort of hear from you, and then take a poll of this board, if there's an opportunity to direct planning, to take a look at those policies, see if they needed to be revised or updated, extended.
Well, yes, the board adopted an urgency ordinance right after the Butte Fire that allowed, it was called the Post Disaster Recovery Ordinance, and it had a lot of provisions in it that tried to assist people who were affected by the fire in recovering and rebuilding their homes. That was adopted then as a permanent ordinance, I think it was in 2016. That had a provision that it was good for two years, and it could be extended for an additional year. So that ordinance would expire in September if we don't do something to provide for additional extension. Supervisor Germany and I have talked about the need to do that, and we're prepared to work on an ordinance to extend that, and we could expedite that and get it back to the board in August. So that the continued need for temporary housing and recovery provisions would still be in place, because there have been, and I haven't had a chance to do any number crunching, but there are a number of people that are still waiting for insurance payments, you know, payments from PG&E to finance the rebuilding of their homes. So there are a lot of people that are still needing temporary housing while they're preparing to rebuild.
Thank you. If you, if the board wants, asks you to take a look at this, if you could also take a look at, you know, sort of historically, what do we do that was right and is helping us get things done, and what do we do that is causing an obstacle? And with the idea of removing those obstacles to help people move forward. And we've now got almost three years of experience. I'm sure there's some ideas out there, what worked and what didn't. Mr. Chair, I would like to, if it's appropriate, to poll the board if we could, as part of this agenda item, have a direct planning to take a look at these ordinances.
Why don't we let public comment and go through the whole thing, and when it comes back for deliberations with the board? I know it's an informational, but at that time, we'll come back and talk about it.
Thank you.
I would like to add into that discussion that if we could look at the data, too, to determine what did work and why did it work? What are the barriers? What are the impediments? Is, are there revisions that we may need to make in our decision process here to help? There's nothing so permanent as something that's temporary. And so how do we get out of the temporary mode and into the permanence, I think is the question. But if we know, if we know what that data point is, is where did we do this well, and what is causing the other areas to just not move along? I think that would help us a great deal in coming or formulating a decision or a point that we can move to.
I agree. So we'll have more discussion.
Mr. Chair. More discussion afterward. We'll go to public comment. Supervisor Olivera.
Thank you. Mr. Mauer, this extension we're talking about, is there a limit to how many times we can extend that, or?
Well, under the current ordinance, there was a one-year extension.
Just a one-time, one-year extension?
And so what we discuss, and what I would propose, would be that as long as we're in a declared state of emergency, the board by resolution could continue to extend that further as needed.
Okay. So we have that option.
So it would be sort of annual review, have that option.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, County Council has a comment, I think, on this issue. Do you want to chime in?
Yeah, I didn't know this was going to come up today. I know that Mr. Mauer and I have been speaking about whether or not this would need to come back as a permanent ordinance or a temporary ordinance. I don't know if you remember more than I do about our conversation on that at this point.
So this is not on the agenda, the ordinance itself is not on the agenda. I think what Supervisor Germany and I talked about was, because it's affecting his, members of his constituency, that there is a need to extend it. In order for me to begin working on an ordinance, I need a poll from the board to direct me to do that. And so in order to meet the timeline, so that an ordinance can be brought to the Planning Commission and to the board for adoption, with then the 30-day waiting period after the ordinance is adopted, we would need to have direction from the board today to begin that process. We're prepared to get it on the Planning Commission agenda for the end of this month, the board agenda for, in August, and that would allow us to have it effective in time to allow people to continue to utilize the provisions of that ordinance.
So we're talking about expediting a permanent ordinance?
Well, it is a permanent ordinance. It was adopted, now a permanent, so the modification that we're considering would be to provide for additional extensions. So the board would need to find that there's still a need for that, and then adopt extension that would, but right now, the ordinance does not allow for any further extension of that.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll open to public comments.
Michelle has approached me, and I have new faith that she can tell a more accurate version of what's going on in Gwyn Mine Road. She said we're going to meet. One important point that I really think needs to be covered is, insofar as I've taken two previous Public Works Directors to the site and showed them where the road was going to cave in, and they did nothing about it, except for one year they repaired it by dumping a bunch of rocks into the stream, which is not entirely legal. At the place that you showed that picture is the most hazardous of all of the slips. It's a hairpin turn, and it will require a culvert and undergrounding the stream just at that one congested place. They're not considered doing that yet, but I'm the one that had to put in 250 feet of underground culvert further down at the Gwyn Mine itself when the road washed away in the 500-foot, the 500-year storm of 1995. After I rebuilt it... Um, after I rebuilt it, it went through another five hundred year storm the next year. Uh, we calculated the size of the culvert correctly and it carried the water perfectly. Uh, hopefully the county will do it to the standards that I paid for when I did it. I could've waited years and tried to make the county pay for part of it, but we needed the road to be open and we needed a stable situation there because it caused, the washout caused mine water to come out into the stream and none of us want that. So if we can look more seriously before the construction starts on that one section and if we could meet at the site, it might save everybody having to do it a third time. Or fourth time is the case maybe. Thank you. And I do apologize for my negative tone this morning. I was really unhappy with the county and I wanna apologize to Mr. McManus. Thank you.
It's always good to stand up and acknowledge when you feel like you've stepped in it. We all step in it a lot, especially when we're new to the county. We don't know the local politics. We step in it. It's always good to talk to the people because if we weren't here, you wouldn't be here. You wouldn't have a check, you wouldn't have a job. We wouldn't need you, but we're here. We're your boss. So we are part of the solution, um, and should be pretty much driving the train. Marty Crane, Director of the Volunteer Center, been around since the early eighties. I met you when, on the day when you were introduced to the county. I gave you my card. I'm sorry, I've been under the radar for quite a few months now, health issues in the family, and, um, but I haven't heard from you. And I think in emergency services, there is a huge role for the community, not just the community in a name, but individually and collectively. And there's a lot to go, there's a lot of, of, uh, training, shall we say, that needs to happen because through the Butte fire, we, I, I'm hoping, I'm always hopeful that we've learned a lot. And, but one of the things that I think we all learned is that our role is not to clean out our closets and bring all those clothes down on day one because, well, our hearts are just broken, of course, but once you start that, it doesn't stop. And the people that are impacted don't have a closet to put anything in. So we need to think about what our role is individually and collectively and, um, have those trainings. And I would love to help you. I'm also Red Cross and I get it. And, um, um, I'm sorry, I forgot where I was, but anyway, I think you get the, the gist. But anyway, so please call me, um, and, uh, but, because I think we can be helpful. And then also I noticed we have a new, I forget what you're calling it, a new signup so we can alert you. All right? What's it called again?
Calaveras Alert.
Okay. We had reverse nine-one-one, whoops, that didn't work, okay? Um, and I know that most of our boards knew, but, uh, you may have heard that it didn't work. Then after that, we had, I think we still have NICSEL through the Sheriff's Department, um, but we also have Code Red. So how is Code Red different from this and why do we constantly get a new something for everybody to sign up for? Something new, something new. If they're signing, 'cause we're already, we're still promoting Code Red. So if they're signing up for Code Red, why can't that automatically, if this is something different, why can't that automatically just, um, apply to that and sign them up for that? Because it's hard enough to get people to sign up for one thing. So anyway, please call me. Thank you.
I'm Terry McBride, District Two, smack dab in the middle of the Butte fire zone, living in a camping trailer. Every night I dream about having a house with a kitchen, with a real bed, a bathtub. We don't do it by choice, we do it because of the situation that we have been put into. So we need an extension. There's no denying it. Everybody up there that's in camping trailers where there was a house are dreaming of building a house. But until everything settles out with the insurance companies and the PG&E, then we're kind of in camping trailers. So I would ask that you extend the, uh, the ordinances that they put in after the Butte fire so those of us that are still in camping trailers can continue to look forward to building a beautiful home with a bathtub and a bed and a kitchen. So, thank you.
Sandy Maitra, District Two. Just very quickly, I'd like to, before the board, commend Michelle Patterson. I've reached out to her a couple of times with concerns on status of areas of Mountain Ranch Road. We had some brief conversations about guardrails, seeing as we've lost all of our natural tree guardrails on that particular street. And she's been very responsive to me. Um, I would also add, um, to Terry McBride's comment that I think we need to be clear, um, particularly with the additional item that's on the agenda today, as to what our stand is for the Butte fire victims and trailers. So I think, Jack, that was an appropriate tie-in and bring-in. Um, I think we do need to reach some clarity on that for these people who are still living in that manner. Thank you.
I lost my home in the Butte fire and I can tell you that just last month, I got a depreciation check from the, um, insurance company. I was one of the lucky ones that was able to rebuild my house. But there are a lot of people still living in trailers out there right now and they're waiting on PG&E or they're waiting on the, um, insurance company or they're fighting it out. And so we do need an extension on that. We very much need an extension. And, um, thank you for your time.
Go, well, District One, thank God we weren't involved in the Butte fire. But we have a lot of problems with roads in our area. Uh, we don't have any road projects in District One this year. We're not counted, I guess, as part of the county anymore. Anyway, I have one suggestion we could do. I saw a commercial on, uh, TV. If we promoted, uh, Domino's to come into, uh, Calaveras County and open up a couple restaurants, uh, they have a project where they're gonna go around and fill potholes. Uh, I think that'd be a great thing for District One, probably District Two, District Three, District Four, and District Five. Maybe all of us should get a Domino's pizza franchise set up in our districts. Uh, so Domino's will come and help repair our roads because obviously we don't seem to care too much about them. People in the Butte fire, they're living in temporary homes because of that fire. People on this council, on this board voted to put a lot of those people out of business. Makes it hard for them to, hopefully they've got insurance, hopefully they get, uh, grants or something to rebuild those homes. Otherwise, maybe Mr. Clapp could, uh, buy up those properties and create another, uh, I don't know, Green Horn Creek, Glocken Tenta, another golf course in Mountain Ranch. We could always use a big subdivision up there. Thanks.
Any other public comments?
I don't know what the answer to it is. I know that it's a very difficult situation, but giving people at least another year would be a very compassionate move. People, some people don't, um, love the land and the feet, the places that they step every day. And, um, I just hope that you will consider these people. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
House of Health, Taxpayer Association. A really good report. One of the thing, at some point, it would be good for the public to know what's the bottom line cost on this, on the, uh, um, on the, uh, on the fire and tree mortality? And where, uh, how's this money, uh, coming to us? And, um, what percentage of the damage it's done is covered by insurance? We know that some of it is and some of the insurance companies are actually paying, uh, paying for replacement of structures. But anyway, to get a financial overall picture, it's a big job, but I think at some point we might wanna get a grip on that. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close public comments.
All in District Three. Um, there shouldn't even be a discussion about the people who lost their homes in the Butte fire. If they're living in a trailer, it's due because they lost their home. Shouldn't even be a discussion. Should be an ordinance to let these people live in a trailer on their property they own due to losing their house. Plain and simple.
All right. I will close public comments and bring it back to the board for discussion. Any other questions by the board? I, I have a question for Michelle. Um, you mentioned that, um, you, um, we have a crew out there with Jeremy, uh, right now and they're driving on paved roads. We had some discussion back over the course of last year and first part of this year on what FEMA was gonna pay for on the road repairs. Have we overcome that? When you say paved, I'm assuming that we're paving them to our road standards right now? So that's all been worked out? FEMA's agreed to it? And we're going forward and constructing roads that will last and repair them?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
For working that out. That was a major hurdle that we've talked about many times at this board on what actually we were gonna get. And we're continually told that we were just gonna get like cold patch over, back to what it was, but if we're actually paving out there, that's wonderful. That's great news and, and you are to be commended, you and your staff and Public Works for getting that worked out, so.
Absolutely. It's been a team effort and yes, we have cut sections of road out and put new sections of road back in.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I think we do need to, we have to manage expectations. These are, these are sites that have been designated, picked out by FEMA. I guarantee there's gonna be a pothole in front of somebody's house that we're not gonna get. We will figure that out. But I, in the ninety-eight percent of everything else, great. Thank you.
All right. Now, you had something you wanted to poll?
Yes, sir. I would like to make, I would like to poll the board on whether they would like to have a direct planning to bring back, um, Butte fire ordinances, um, to this board and to the Planning Commission for extension.
Supervisor Clapp?
Yes.
Can you turn your microphone on, please?
Yes.
Supervisor Mills?
Um, Supervisor Germany, would you also want to include that this be tied to the length of time that we are holding a, uh, a state of emergency on the, on that issue?
I would actually not like that. I think it ought to be an extension or have a timeline to it. I don't think this ought to be forever ordinance, but my concern is that, I know that, uh, um, ROEs would be desperate, is desperate to close up this disaster.
You don't wanna close up and then end up...
I don't wanna close up the disaster.
Okay.
And leave people hanging. So I think we have to, 'cause I know Michelle would like nothing better than to check this box.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Supervisor Olivera?
Yes.
Of course, Germany, I'm a yes, so we have five-zero.
Did it work for you, Peter?
Good. All right. Any other comments before we move on?
Thank you.
No? Thank you. We'll take a five-minute break. Madam Clerk, item number fifteen.
Item fifteen is from the Board of Supervisors, the appointment of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. So today we have before us three applications, uh, for three different vacancies. The first is from the, for the Copperopolis Cemetery District. We have a vacancy for a term expiring twelve-thirty-one, two thousand nineteen for member two, and we have an application from Barbara Cheney. We have, um, two vacancies on the Solid Waste Task Force. One is for a term expiring, well, both are for terms expiring twelve-thirty-one, two thousand nineteen. One is for environmental group representative and an application has been received from James Van Zant. And the other is for a general public representative and an application has been received from Sherry Roush.
All right. As normal, we'll ask if, um, any of the board members want to pull one of these off? Not? Okay, then we'll open up the public comment. Any public comment on these three applicants? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board and we'll look for a motion, um, for these three.
I'll make the motion.
A motion by Supervisor Clapp?
I will second it.
And a second by Supervisor Mills to accept these three applicants for these board positions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Passes five-zero. We will now go to lunch, recess for lunch. Um, yeah, we will come back at one-thirty.
So we'll come back at one-thirty.